Can you hear me?
I can.
Let's echo.
No, you're good.
Okay.
Tony, this is Stacy. It actually sounds like you're um in like a hole or something for me.
You guys can't hear me?
I can hear you, but it's a it's a stress. Last week you were clear. Last week you were very clear.
What about now Stacy?
I got a phone ringing back now.
Oh, that's not me. Can you hear me now Stacy? Is that better?
Uh nah, we'll we'll handle it.
Can you understand me?
Low, but I got you.
What about now?
Last week, I'm trying to try to turn up my volume too since it's me, but last week you were perfect.
I didn't do anything different.
Oh no.
Hey Commissioner Fields, hey everyone, I shouldn't uh think people have a good evening, everyone. Good to see everyone here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Evening.
Roger. Taylor, can you hear me? When you do the roll call, um and you get to Commissioner Bryant's name, he is here, he's listed as an attendee. So I'll uh click allow to talk when um we do the roll call so that he can he can clarify that he is here for the record.
He says that again for me.
When we get to the, when you get to the roll call and you start calling the commissioner's roll call name, and you get the Commissioner um Bryant, he is here, he's in the attend in the attendee side. Um he's calling in, so I will, when we do that, he'll um if he, whatever the case is, there's some kind of technology issue, he is here for the record, so I'll make sure that we have him unmuted for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Hi Lauren, Steve, looks like it's a few Steves. Oh Steve Rothman. Hey Brad, hi Ms Peters, hi Asia, Ms Willborn, good to see you again, Dominique, Commissioner Fay, good to see you. Not sure if I said Lauren, but hey Lauren.
Hello, I'm sorry, I was trying to get to my mute button. Good evening, everyone.
Hey.
Good evening again.
Ms Peters, I uh got the text, did you need, is she gonna be speaking? I can't hear you, muted.
I'm not sure.
There we go. He said, what should be um speaking? She's in the meeting, she's in the attendees, so if she's not speaking, we're gonna leave her in the attendees section on the attendees.
No problem.
Okay. I see two Asians, hey Asia.
Hey Tony, nice haircut.
Thank you, thank you. Trying to get ready for my birthday, wasn't enough for another month, but you know.
Mm-hmm, gotta switch it up sometimes.
No, stay ready till you don't have to get ready, isn't that what they say?
Exactly.
Hey Commissioner Atkins, hey Pastor Garman.
Hello Tony, how you doing today?
I'm great, hi Pastor Barry.
Hey, how you doing Tony?
I'm doing all right, I'm doing all right. Looks like we caught you in the middle of your transportation moment.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Alright ladies and gentlemen, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Let's see here, I've got myself a bit correct. I am counting to see if we've got at least, we love it. I myself, okay, I think that we've got a corps. Ladies and gentlemen, good evening, I am Sean Atkins, I'm Chair of the East Point Planning and Zoning Commission, and at this time, I am calling to order our December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one um meeting. Staff, would you please sound roll call to establish a corps?
Commissioner Atkins.
Present.
Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Lovett.
Present.
Commissioner Bell. Commissioner Fan.
Here.
Commissioner Tucker Todd. Commissioner McKnight.
Present.
Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner Fields.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, we have a corps.
Okay, thank you so very much, Ms Solomon, and for the record, I will share with you that I did hear from Commissioner Bell. Uh he in fact will not be able to join us this evening. I've also heard from Commissioner Miller, uh he had an emergency to come up, but said that he will join us as soon as he is able, and Commissioner Tucker Todd had some issues to come up, and he's not quite sure if he will be able to join us. As those commissioners join us, I will make sure that we note that for the record. I also see that Ms Alexander is here, um our stenographer, our court reporter, and so um would like to make sure that she is receiving all of that information. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Was to adopt as gentleman as presented, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan and seconded by Commissioner Bryant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, um Commissioner Bryant has seconded the motion, Commissioner Fan has made the motion that we adopt our agenda as presented, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, our our agenda is adopted. Commissioners, we have received our verbatim minutes for our November eighteenth meeting, at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve our November eighteen meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair, um I move that we accept the I move that we accept the November eighteenth men minutes as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Lovett, seconded by Commissioner McKnight, that we approve our November eighteenth meeting minutes, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, our November eighteen, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes are approved. Our first agenda item is an item of old business, it is case number two zero two one, ours in Robert, Z is in zebra dash zero zero one dash zero eight with a concurrent variance at two zero two one, V is in Victor, C is in Charles, dash zero zero one dash zero nine. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Under Old Business Case Twenty Twenty One, RZ dash zero zero one dash zero eight slash twenty twenty-one VC dash zero zero one dash zero nine. Applicant LDG Development LLC, current zoning C two, central business commercial. Applicant seeks to rezone subject property from C two to R four, multi-family development with the variance request to reduce required number of parking spaces from three hundred sixty-seven spaces to three hundred thirty-eight spaces for three multi-family buildings of four stories each. And this case type is zoning with concurrent variance.
Thank you, Ms Solomon. This agenda item, as well as the others, we will hold a public hearing for this evening. Um all of our items under new business are required that we have a public hearing, we have held a public hearing for case number two zero two one, ours in Robert, Z is in zebra, dash zero zero one, dash zero eight with a concurrent variance of two zero two one, V is in Victor, C is in Charles, dash zero zero one, dash zero nine. We held that public hearing in October, however, tonight, I am entertaining a motion to hold the public hearing again, once I read our rules for public hearings. As we continue to meet virtually due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we're utilizing this telemeeting platform to act upon planning and zoning cases as they come before this commission. As such, I am asking each participant other than commissioners and staff to mute their devices. Once we get to parts of the agenda that require public input, those who have notified staff of their desire to speak will be recognized to speak. If you did not notify staff but desire to speak, please use the raise hand or chat function to be recognized. Public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be conducted in accordance with Section ten dash two two one nine of the East Point Zoning Code and Development Regulations. Public hearing rules are as follows. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed case will be provided an opportunity to address the commission. The applicant for the zoning case or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of fifteen minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning case will then be permitted to speak for a total of fifteen minutes. By majority vote, the commission may increase the total time of speakers provided that each side is given the same amount of time. There, if there's more than one speaker for a side, the chair or the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each individual speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her allotted time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of the corps. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify him or herself, state his or her current address, and each speaker shall address remarks only to the commission. Each speaker shall also speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning ordinance under consideration, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse the speaker the right to continue if after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of the corps. Ladies and gentlemen, you've heard our rules for public hearing. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for our case two zero two one, ours in Robert, Z is in zebra, dash zero zero one, dash zero eight with a concurrent variance two zero two one, V is in Victor, C is in Charles, dash zero zero one, dash zero nine.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we open a public meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There's been a um a motion by Commissioner Fields and a second by Commissioner Bryant that this body opens a public hearing for our case under Old Business, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is our applicant present this evening? Is there a representative from LDG?
Here with that. Yes, Michelle Battle here with Battle Law representing the applicant.
Okay, Ms Battle, the floor is yours.
Um I'm not sure if staff has our PowerPoint. If I, if not, if I'm allowed to share, that would be great, if not, I'll just roll off of what you all have in front of you.
Okay, well, we would want you to have your own materials, so if you have sent that PowerPoint to staff, I'm sure that they are loading it.
Actually, uh Mrs. Chair, if she wants to share her screen, she can at the time.
Okay, if you give her those.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um as already indicated, the property is at Zero North Desert Drive. Um we are seeking to rezone the property from C two to R four. Um the property does have a current land use designation of regional center, and we are seeking to develop three multi-family buildings of four stories each for a total of two hundred and six total units. The intent here um with this project is to allow its proximity to um the Camp Creek Corridor where there is a significant amount of commercial development, we are directly across from the food bank. And we believe that this is an excellent site um for the type of housing that we are proposing. Um we are looking to develop this site for um wouldn't say work, sorry, workforce housing, apologize, got distracted by my phone ringing. Um for workforce housing um that we believe is sorely needed within this community. And when we look at the site here, um we are on the lesser developed side of the Camp Creek Corridor um off of two eighty-five to uh the east of the two eighty-five uh highway. And again, we are in the area where we are directly across from the food bank and near um the residential communities off of Red Wine that lie behind. Um when we look at the site plan which is before you, um you can see that we are coming off of the Red Wine Corridor, but we are proposing to abandon um Red Rhine Road, and that was really at the impetus of the uh adjacent community. And they're very clear that they don't want access um from uh Desert Drive one to Red Wine to come into their community. And we have spoken with the food bank um about the right-of-way abandonment, we believe that um we could be successful in getting that done, the road right now is not open. Um and abandoning that formally um would certainly allow for that to become a green space on the site we're showing now. As you come into the site, you'll see that we have both the stormwater management facilities at um towards the entrances, and as you come in, you're at the clubhouse um where the pool and other uh interior amenities um are available to the community along with the leasing office and the play yard. Um you come back into the interior and we do have um ample parking, we are asking for variance to reduce the parking, we believe that that is suitable based on the total number of units that we have and proximity to other parking areas um in in the surrounding community. Um in terms of um some of the adjacent parking areas, but we believe that we are more than sufficient um in parking for the residents that would be living on site. Um LDG is a um widely known developer, they typically are developing affordable housing, this is a little different market that they are looking um to work with, workforce housing on this site. Um we believe again that this is something that's sorely needed within um the community, and we believe that um this will be a benefit to the overall um East Point community by providing housing for individuals, doctor, not doctor, sorry. Um I was trying to say, we were looking to provide housing um for those who are working not only within the Camp Creek area um in terms of the commercial area, but there are many um individuals, whether they are schoolteachers, firefighters, others who are in public service, um first responders that would benefit from this type of workforce housing that we are seeking to provide. These are some of the elevations, you can see it's a very attractive um building and design um with interior corridors. We have looked at this type of product in other areas, um I've worked with LDG in the Camp County where they are actually um developing and have developed um product as well, um that has been very well received, we believe that um this will also be a very quality um project as well. When we look at the overall site, we're looking at masonry fiber board, a cement fiber board for the exterior finishes, the unit sizes will be between eight hundred and fifty square feet to um eleven thirty. Um the total number of bedrooms um will be um offering both one, two, and three-bedroom units. Um there will be surface parking and um business center, fitness room, pool, clubhouse, and play area will be the amenities. This will be a gated community, and it will have um all of the latest security features in terms of security cameras, key fobs, um and the security gate. We know that this property is already um anticipated being developed for a townhome community, that community never was developed. Um so we know that residential is an appropriate use on the site um for reasons, you know, beyond our control, the um townhome community again was never developed, and this property is up for sale. Um we believe that again, what is being proposed is suitable, and we are near other multi-family product um in the area. While we are abutting a single-family detached residential community, we believe that we have provided um sufficient buffer between the two um to allow us um to create some distance between the two. We would say this, however, um if it is the inclination of this board, and we certainly were at the meeting last week, and know there are some concerns about the project, and we would like the opportunity to continue to work with the community um to try and address uh the issues that have been raised. Um and um therefore would request a deferral of this matter to allow us um additional time to be able to do that. Um we've had several meetings, um but we um feel like there's still some work that can be done to try and address the issues that have been raised. With that, we would respectfully request a deferral of this matter, thank you.
Thank you, Ms Battle. Are there any other proponents here this evening to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor? Hearing none, seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning matter, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter?
Mr. Chair, we do have um attendee with a hand raised, Mr. Doug Jones, I can allow him to speak if you'd like.
Yes, please, if you would go ahead and unmute Mr. Jones and allow him the floor. Mr. Jones, um if you would unmute, you have the floor, sir.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you commissioners. Um I am Doug Jones, I am the president of the Williamsburg Area Development Association. We are one of three communities that are um abutting the proposed project site. We do appreciate the ways in which um LDG Development and Battle Law Firm have engaged with the community over the past few months in engaging us in the discussion about what they plan for the site. Um however, there are some outstanding questions that we have about the site um in terms of the amount of housing that's proposed, the fact that it is rental and not home ownership, and also questions about what is going to happen with the L circle desert drive alignment. Uh and because of those things, we do remain opposed to the project in its current iteration. Um I respect the fact that um Michelle Battle has just requested um a deferment in order to con to continue engaging with us, uh and we would support that um for having no action on the project right now, so we can continue our conversation uh with the development team and the law firm about what the project is ultimately going to be.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. Are there any other opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any other opponents here to speak against?
Mr. Chair, we do have a Dicky Huber with her hair raised, hand raised as well, and I can unmute her if you'd like.
Yes, that's Ms Huber you stated?
Yes.
Okay, um if you could, please unmute Ms Huber. Um before you do that, Mr. Austin, I don't think that I took care of this housekeeping matter, can we go back to unmute Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, Mr. Jones, would you please state your first and last name and your current address for the record?
Uh Douglas Jones, the address is three zero seven eight Duke Gloucester, East Point, Georgia, three oh three four four.
Okay, thank you, sir. And uh Ms Huber, you have the floor next, and if you would state your first and last name and your current address.
Hi, yes, I'm Dicky Huber, I'm at thirty-four thirty-seven Prince George Street.
Okay, you have the floor.
Okay, um I would just like to echo the sentiments of uh Mr. Doug Jones. We um and also thank uh the Battle Law Firm and the developers for um being very nice and working with us on our designs. But we we do have some problems, um I'm concerned about uh the traffic, I do appreciate they did a traffic study, but I think most all of us have probably been over there at times when at Desert Drive, when the lines backed up, and you have to wait for two or three light cycles, uh cycles of the traffic light to be able to get onto Camp Creek. So with two hundred and six units being added, that that just seems like it has to be a lot more traffic that we're just not prepared for yet. Maybe at some point it will be prepared if they get the Desert Drive extension completed, but that's at least, I believe, at least a couple of years off probably. And uh let's see, and also we, East Point has already sixty, I believe sixty to sixty-five percent uh renters, so we we would very much prefer to see homeownership there, just because people do, that have a stake in the community, just make real good citizens, and and that's what um that's what we want for our neighborhood, that's what East Point I think wants for our city. We would uh, we would also appreciate the deferment if um thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms Huber. Are there any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Are there any other opponents here to speak against the zoning matter?
Mr. Chair, looks like maybe Ms Huber was the last person.
Okay, thank you. Um the applicant now has an opportunity to rebut. Ms Battle, would you?
No, I have no further, I appreciate.
Like to use a portion of your time to rebut, oh, Ms Battle, allow me to finish, okay?
I'm sorry, I my my screen stopped up, I couldn't hear you.
Okay, thank you. Um you do, you have the right, you reserve the right to use a portion of your time um to make any rebuttal or closing remarks after we've now had um two to speak on the opposing side. So this time, I will yield the floor to you, should you have any additional remarks.
Sorry for interrupting you, my screen froze up, so I didn't hear that you were still talking. Um no, I have other comments, but I do appreciate the support for the deferral from the community, thank you.
This, this is Chris Bird representing LDG, and I do appreciate your.
I'm sorry, um Mr. Bird, um if you would like to be recognized, we don't block out. So if you would like to be recognized, please raise your hand. Okay, and we can recognize you. Okay, it looks like, so it looks like Mr. Bird is under a Brittany Butler name, is that correct?
That that could be correct. Yes, Brittany Butler is is with Battle Law.
Okay, and so you are on the applicant's side, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um the applicant reserves um the right to speak and rebuttal for the remainder of their time allotted, so Mr. Um state your first and last name and your current address, Mr. Bird.
Um Christopher Bird, LDG Development, fourteen sixty-nine South Fourth Street, Louisville, Kentucky, four oh two oh eight. Also seventeen seventeen Ware Avenue, East Point, Georgia, three oh three four four. Um just uh want to um uh thank Mr. Jones and Ms Huber for their continued support um to to keep talking with us, we we we're developers that work in good faith, and we feel like we're working with the neighborhood in good faith, so just wanna throw that out there.
Okay, thank you, and if you would do me a favor to lower your hand, I would appreciate that. Is there anyone else on the applicant's side that would like to use a portion of their time for rebuttal? Right, thank you. Hearing none, seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing for case number two zero two one, ours in Robert, Z is in zebra, dash zero zero one dash zero eight with the concurrent variance two zero two one, V is in Victor, C is in Charles, dash zero zero one dash zero nine.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is removed by Commissioner Lovett, second by Commissioner Fan, that we close the public hearing, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yeah, sir. In reference to case number twenty twenty-one, RZ dash zero zero one, dash zero eight with concurrent variance case number twenty twenty-one VC, dash zero zero one, dash zero nine located on North Desert Drive, the applicant is LDG Development, zoning is central business commercial, and the applicant seeks to rezone subject property from commercial, central business commercial to multi-family development R four with a request to reduce the required number of parking spaces from three hundred and sixty-seven spaces to three hundred thirty-eight spaces for three multi-family buildings of four stories each. Um again, the property is zoned C two and is within the regional center feature language designation. The applicant has provided an aerial site showing where the property will be located, the proposed project, excuse me, will be located, as well as staff has provided pictures showing um the location of the site. Uh it is right nega- It is right neighboring the food bank. And you can see the picture to the right. There is, you can see where the, the Redwine Road is actually closed. The applicant has also provided a site plan. We have a non-colored version in comparison to Ms. Battle's beautiful colored version, but it is the same site plan. The applicant has provided elevations and rendering showing what the intended look of the project will be. And so a few frequently asked questions as she went over, including the materials to be measuring fiber cement board, the unit sizes ranging from eight hundred and fifty square feet to one thousand one hundred and thirty square feet with a mix of one, two, and three bedroom surface parking amenities are proposed to include business center, fitness room, pool, clubhouse, and playground. It is proposed to be gated and security features include security cameras, key fob entry, security gate, and gated perimeter. During the, as Ms. Battle stated, this is an old case that came to you all, to this board, two months ago in October. During the CZIM Community Zoning Information Meeting held in September, there were several concerns raised by citizens regarding multiple topics such as the opening of Redwine Road, the amount of traffic and potential crime in the area, and many citizens voiced their desire to have more time to meet with the developer. And they did, they did submit a letter of deferral on October twenty-first, which is why they are back here today. The property, according to the future land use, the typical zoning district does include R four. However, it also speaks only to multifamily being a permitted use in the Camp Creek Parkway above commercial uses. And for that, for that reason, staff has recommended denial because it seemingly, it thinks that the project is not in compliance with the city comprehensive plan. And that, again, it only allows multifamily above commercial land use, which would be a mixed use project.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant. We've also heard from community leaders and residents. The applicant has made a request for a deferral, and we've also heard staff's recommendation. Because this is a rezoning with a concurrent variance, the body, I will entertain a motion. If you are inclined to defer the case again, please do so by your, your motion. If you would like for the case to move forward, please make sure that your motion is in the form of a recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Fields.
I'll make a motion that the application be denied. The recommendation would be denied based on, first of all, the staff's recommendation about it not being in compliance with the overall.
Commissioner Fields, at this time, we wouldn't be able to go into, we'd have to get a second for the motion. If there is no second, then we would not be able to speak to the motion. So we must have a second to be able to speak to it. So your motion is to deny, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioners, is there a second to deny the motion? Application. I'm sorry.
I second it, but you can give, you can give the pad, it doesn't make any difference, I'm good.
The motion has been made to recommend denial, that motion was made by Commissioner Fan, that motion was made by Commissioner Fields and seconded by Commissioner Fan. At this time, are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Mr. Fields, this is your opportunity.
Yes, although this about the number of units being placed over in that ten acre area, they fail to speak about how many people are going to be over there. And I believe that it's the people in the residence that's going to make or break this area. And I believe that, given the, the density of East Point, which is two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven people per square mile, the thought of putting one thousand eight hundred and thirty-six people into a ten acre space seems blatantly overcrowded. For that particular, for that particular space would present a burden on the city and the utilities. Now, if you look at the evaluation, the area analysis section below in its states, permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby properties. And I don't believe it, it wouldn't, because the proposal will not permit a use suitable in view of the present use. That is to say, it is a commercial area with heavy automobile and bus traffic. Adding pedestrians would be burdensome on city services. Section D on that area, I'd like to address whether or not the zoning proposal will result in a use which will or could cause an excessive burdensome use on existing streets, transportation, facilities, utilities, or schools. If this is approved, it will be a need for sidewalks, increased sanitation, and other needs. You can see the community response from CZIM meetings and also section sixteen of this report. If you could put that up, Mr. Austin, the criteria report, we're speaking about evaluation and criteria analysis. And below the CZIM meeting notes, there is a, below the staff recommend, recommendation, there's also section number sixteen. And just give me a minute, please.
Okay, Mr. Fields, are you having some connection issues? Our court reporter is showing signs that she's not able to clearly hear everything that you're saying. And so we will want to make sure that your connection is very solid, so that you will not have to repeat things for the record.
Okay, I appreciate. Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to.
I think there's somebody's mic that is not muted, I think.
Okay, Mr. Garmin. Okay, Mr. Garmin. Can staff, could you please mute everyone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, so we do not blurt out in our meetings. So we will take care of the technical difficulties. We appreciate any and all assistance that you may be able to offer. The reason that we do not blurt out in our meetings is because, as I am stating, what is very important, because these are matters of planning and zoning, this body employs a stenographer, a court reporter. So before a person is speaking or before the person is recognized to speak, that person must be given the floor, so that is a part of the record. When you blurt things out, the court reporter has no idea who is speaking. So please do not blurt out in these meetings. If this happens again, I will ask that you are expelled from the meeting. That will go to everybody in attendance. So we need a solid connection for you, Commissioner Fields, so that Ms. Alexander may be able to pick up all of your words. They're very important. It is important for us to have that in the record. So I am hoping that everyone else other than Commissioner Fields is muted, so that there is no other interference.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to point our attention to section number sixteen, which talks about the transportation service area comments. And I'd like to read those which goes in line with the, which are in line with the comments made at the CZIM meeting as well by the residents. And I'd like to also point out that the, you know, for the record that the commission is the direct representative of the citizens, and we may have, they have concerns, but to be specific and to be factual, we like to connect these objections to some real life to some real life things that could be happening. Now, the transportation comments read as such, current study only projects the traffic. Now, they did a traffic study analysis, but now our transportation community, in addition to what the staff has recommended, they also says that the current study, which were, which was presented, it only projects traffic volumes two years into the future. And it says five year, two thousand twenty, twenty, twenty-six projections are more appropriate for future no build and build conditions. You would understand what that meant. For North Desert, Atlanta Food Bank, and Redwine Road, AM heavy vehicle percentage is five percent for northbound and, and shouldn't they question, shouldn't the PM southbound also be five percent in their study? So there are discrepancies in their presentation. But I think the most important part of their presentation is they fail to say how many people are going to be living in this area. Now, this is urban type development that they want to do, but we're a suburban community, and it doesn't fit. So for these reasons, and those that were stated within the application by the staff, and plus the fact that their legal staff has sent in some information saying that, like, they have a statement of intent. Their intent is that if we, if we deny them permission on this application, that it'll be the same as saying that we're denying the owners the ability to own their property and that they should be compensated for it, and that they, in fact, would go to court to challenge whatever decision we make here. So speaking to that, this is why it's taken a while. That's why I wanted to point out these facts and present them to them. Which the last time we spoke, there was no indication that they had taken the population that's going to be over there into consideration, and whether or not, once this, if in fact this development is built, how are they gonna maintain it, and who's going to maintain it? Will it be maintained, and also the different, the additional stress it's going to have on the sanitation department directly, specifically, and they have to build up. I'm sorry, I didn't finish, but the sidewalks will need to be built along the frontage of North Commerce Drive and also provide sidewalks ADA access from the internal site to the intersection of North Desert and Redwine. So there are a lot of work recommended by the transportation community that would have, saying that the pressure on the city and the expenses from the city would have to increase just in order to to try to properly service the people. So I think that this is a burdensome application, and this particular project would be burdensome on the city. And I don't believe that, based on the foregoing things that have been said here, that it's going to be a good fit for East Point. So I recommend that this application, and we recommend it now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Fields. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns from any of the other? Okay, I would just like to follow up with just a couple of things to the comments of Commissioner Fields. Commissioner Fields, one of the things that you have mentioned in your comments both this evening as well as in the work session was about the number of people who would be potentially living in the development. I would like for the record to reflect that this body is making no claims against familial status because we would not want to discriminate against familial status. If the development is one, two, and three bedrooms, and if those families qualify, then we would want those families to be offered the right to housing. Familial status is a protected federal class, and we are in no way attempting to discriminate against familial status. And so I wanted to say that for the record. The other concern that you mentioned in your comments, Mr. Fields, is the, the need for sidewalks. Sidewalks, as a matter of course, for any new developments would be borne by, that expense will be borne by the developer. So sidewalks would occur at the development. That is something that we added to our zoning ordinance a few iterations back. And my only, my, and, and my only other comment is that I, I respect the motion on the floor to deny. It seemed that the community was in good faith, and it seems like the developer was in good faith of working with the community to resolve some of those issues. And so I was hoping, I, I had hopes that they would be able to come to some type of agreement or at least come back to say, we've exhausted all of our options, and this is how we feel about the development. But the motion on the floor is to deny. That motion is made by Commissioner Fields. The motion is seconded by Commissioner Fan. If there are no other comments, questions, or concerns, Commissioners, at this time I'll call the question. All in favor to recommend denial, please sound aye.
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 Okay, all opposed, please, all opposed, please sound nay.
Nay.
I am a nay. Commissioner Brian? Commissioner Brian is an aye. Okay, so I think that we will do a roll call vote just so that we are clear for the record. So staff, would you please sound roll call vote?
Commissioner Atkins?
Aye. And I'm sorry, Ms. Solomon, you should come back to me last. The chair votes in case of a tie, so go to all the other Commissioners first, and, and then the, the chair will cast the vote last.
Okay, thank you.
Sure thing.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Lovey?
Deny, aye.
Commissioner Bell? Commissioner Fan?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucker Todd? Commissioner McKnight?
Nay.
Commissioner Bryant?
Aye.
Commissioner Fields?
Aye.
Commissioner Atkins?
Okay, yay. So the motion carries to deny. We've got four ayes and two nays, and the motion to deny carries. So this body will recommend denial. This case now will move forward to mayor and council, and it will then be deliberated and finalized there. Thank you so much. Okay?
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Of course, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know we just voted on this, but how does that affect the variance? Because variances are done by us. So if it goes to council, we, we deny both the variance and the rezon.
Because it is a concurrent variance, because it is a concurrent variance, the concurrent variance then moves forward to mayor and council where we are not the final arbiters. So, and so if it moves forward to mayor and council, and if mayor and council decides to approve, then the matter can be approved in the current state that it is. And that was one of the reasons why I was hoping that the developer and the community would have additional opportunity to work through any of their issues until they came back to this body to say that we think that we've exhausted all of those. But the body has now voted to move this forward to deny, and so that is the recommendation, and it'll move to mayor and council. Okay?
Thank you.
Sure thing.
And thank you for listening to the community.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, I think that was the second time that Mr. Bird has done that, so I'll have to ask that you please expel him from the meeting, staff.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is under new business, case number two zero two one, via and Victor dash zero zero two dash one zero. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Case number twenty twenty-one V dash zero zero two dash one zero, located at thirty forty-nine Stone Road, applicant Brad Hughes. On the current zoning is residential one, R one, single family. Applicant seeks variance to reduce heated floor area requirement for nine hundred square feet to six hundred seventy-four square feet. Case type variance.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Commissioners, this case also requires a public hearing. At this case, at this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing for case number two zero two one, via and Victor dash zero zero two dash one zero.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner McKnight, seconded by Commissioner Love it. This body opens the public hearing for two zero two one via invictor dash zero zero two dash one zero. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it. The public hearing is now open. Do we have our applicant, Mr. Brad Hughes present?
Uh, good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Chair. This is Steve Rothman on behalf of the applicant. Twenty eight forty nine Paces Ferry Road.
Okay, Mr. Rothman, you can go ahead and present the case.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Uh, before I jump into it, I want to clarify the the description was to reduce the heated floor area from nine hundred to six seventy two. I want to clarify that the all we're doing is reducing the heated floor area on the ground level. There thi- this is for a single family subdivision. These homes will exceed the minimum floor area for a home. Um, and so this at this variance is about the heated floor area on the ground level because it came as a surprise to us that you can't count garages as floor area. And so that's why we're here. This applica- this property was before you a few months ago to obtain variances in order to build out a subdivision that had been built ten years ago and then the previous developer uh, previous landowner uh with the downturn in two thousand and eight didn't complete it. Um, the roads are out there, although there's some sinkholes and things like that. The detention pond has been done, although it's some silt has gone into it. Uh, water sewer, all these, uh, all the grading and infrastructure has been put in, but it is, uh, the site was cleared. Um, and a few months ago, we came before you and this commission granted variance uh variances because the zoning code had changed to allow the the property, the same number of homes that was originally approved uh to be built and um and we we came forward with uh support from the community. Um, in this case, we learned during permitting, we thought we were through the public hearing process, we went in and at that point learned that the homes and the footprints for the homes um, that if you don't count the garages, uh, there's not enough floor area on the ground level. Again, the homes will exceed the minimum size for homes, which is fifteen hundred square feet. Um, it's just a a technical matter about the ground level, the homes, we trying to keep them symmetrical. Um, and so I think with that, um, I'll stop except to say that Brad Hughes is a panelist. Uh, he's on also. If there's questions, he's available to answer questions. I think with that out of respect for your time, um, I'll stop there and 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 will respond to any comments or concerns that the commission may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Hearing none and seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Any opponents here to speak against this zoning case? Hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Let us not all speak at once, commissioners.
Slow the program here, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound a recommendation?
Yes, sir. Case number twenty twenty one V dash zero zero two dash zero dash one zero, excuse me. Located at thirty forty nine Stone Road, the applicant is Brad Hughes with a Rockhaven Home. The zoning is R one, single family dwelling. The applicant seeks variance to reduce ground level heated floor area requirement from nine hundred square feet to six hundred and seventy four. As stated, the property is zone R one, single family residential and is within the suburban residential future land use designation. Um, as the applicant stated, you only remember this case that came through for some variances uh um for buffers and setbacks um due to the topography and the environmental hardship that the loss and the zone, the new zoning had placed on the applicant, although the property had been previously approved. Um, because of the environmental topographical issue that the applicant has experienced that we have seen before, that does recommend approval uh for their their variance request.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant and we've also heard staff's recommendation for case number two zero two one via invictor dash zero zero two dash one zero. Um, this particular case is a variance at three zero four nine Stone Road. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Close your full approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields. So this body approves case number two zero two one via invictor dash zero zero two dash one zero. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it. This application is approved. Uh, Mr. Hughes, this body is the final arbiter for variances, so the case ends here. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rothman. Our next case is yes, our next case is two zero two one via invictor dash zero zero four dash one zero. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Case number twenty twenty one V dash zero zero four dash one zero located at twenty one forty seven Dotson Drive. Applicant Headland Heights, U M C. The current zoning is R dash one, single family. Applicant seeks variance to install monument sign at Headland Heights United Methodist Church. Case type variance.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Uh, commissioners, at this time I'll entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
Motion to open the public hearing, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Love it, seconded by Commissioner Fields. So this body opens a public hearing for two zero two one via invictor dash zero zero four dash one zero. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it. The public hearing is now open. Do we have an authorized representative from Headland Heights United Methodist Church?
Yes, you do.
Okay, would you please state your first and last name and your current address?
Betty Peters, one forty eight Moss Point, McDonough.
Okay, go ahead and present your case.
I'm sorry, one forty eight Moss Point Drive, McDonough, Georgia.
Go ahead and present your case, Miss Peters.
Yes, um, Headman, on behalf of Headland Heights United Methodist Church, we are re seeking a relief from the sixteen foot uh maximum monument sign size. The church has been gifted a a twenty four square foot monument sign in which we were denied a sign permit to to erect it at the church. This denial of the permit creates a hardship for the church identification and its relationship to the community. Our previous sign was too small to be noticed and people continually passed by, not realizing that there was a church in that spot. We would like to continue to be that light that the community needs, but they need to have a large aside enough to draw their attention. We strongly believe that if we had a sign which could be read in passing, that more people would be drawn to see what we're all about. Our people have sacrificed to pay the fees that are required to have this done. And so we humbly ask you to reconsider and approve our application so that more people can catch the light at the heights. We know that there are several uh churches in our area that have larger signs and so we ask that you please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peters. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter?
Mr. Chair, we have a Ms. Deborah Holloway here to speak in um support of this project.
Okay. If you could please unmute Ms. Holloway. And Ms. Holloway, if you are Reverend Holloway, if you would please state your first and last name and your current address, you have the floor.
Good evening. I'm Deborah S. Holloway. I reside at four three eight one Buckingham Circle, Decatur, Georgia, three double oh three five. Uh, I am the senior pastor at Headland Heights and I concur with uh Minister Peters that we are indeed in need of a sign that will be able to communicate with those persons in the community to draw people to our church. I thank you for hearing us today.
Okay, thank you, Reverend Holloway. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of the zoning matter? Hearing none and seeing none, um, staff, are there any that I cannot see but who may be on the phone?
I love like Ms. Holloway was the only person.
All right, thank you. Are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Any opponents here to speak against this zoning matter?
No, sir.
Hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Love it, seconded by Commissioner Fields. This body closes the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it. The public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound a recommendation?
Yeah, sir. Um, I did want to give some a little bit of background uh information for the next three cases, excluding the final case, which will be a rezoning case. Um, but the next three cases are all churches ironically enough that came to us, um, I guess last month, some of their applications last month and expressed their hardship in regards to um their signage and needing um signs for various reasons. So what we discovered while speaking to the churches is that the city at some point seems to have its own churches and schools as residential zoning. Uh, usually R one, single family zoning or R one A, which is urban residential zoning. Although the city does currently have an EI known as educational institutional zoning designation. Churches, however, are still only approved through a special use permit even in the institutional zoning district. And due to this, the churches being um seemingly maybe wrongfully zoned, the they face an undue hardship and are forced to file variances for signs due to restrictions of the sign ordinance or residential property. Um, the zoning, although you find churches and schools within residential areas for the zoning, the land use, the zoning is for the land use. And since the churches are not using the land as residences, that's where the conflict is with these next three cases. So um, we are, we have our individual recommendations for each case, but it is commonly seen in other municipalities. I've worked for plethora of cities, counties, and municipalities over the last couple of years. Um, and it is commonly seen for churches and schools to be zoned as institutional land uses and being permitted by rights. Um, you all are very familiar with um us going through the process of undergoing a rewrite of the current zoning ordinance where we will take a deeper look at it and to the possibility of properly rezoning churches and schools to appropriate institutional zoning as well as possibly making text amendments to the sign ordinance to um help alleviate this undue hardship. And we did speak to our zoning attorney earlier today um in regard to these cases. So as stated, the applicant is Headland Heights United Methodist Church. The case number twenty twenty one V dash zero zero four dash ten located at twenty one forty seven Dotson Drive. As stated, the property is within the R one, single family residential zoning designation. And the applicant seeks a variance to install monument height monument sign at Headland Heights United Methodist Church. Again, the property is zone R one, single family residential and is within the suburban residential future land use designation. The applicant has provided a plant, a map showing where the sign is proposed to be. And they have also given us some information regarding um the city ordinance only allows a sixteen square foot sign. So they have shown what that sixteen square foot sign looks like in comparison to other churches seen throughout the city. Um, so as you can see, it does look like it's it's fairly small because it is based off of the residential zoning um instead of the institutional. Had there been an institutional zoning, they wouldn't actually be here for the variance. The applicant has also provided, our staff has provided um site photos of the church. And our recommendation is to recommend approval with the following conditions, including a landscape plan around the signage that they um resemble what they have provided to us that you have seen on this presentation. And the base should be composed of masonry brick and natural stone as resembling um the rendering provided to them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Austin. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant. We've also heard from staff. Their recommendation is to approve with the condition as stated. At this time, commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Close to approve.
Second.
Um, just one second, please. Commissioner Fan, is your motion to approve with the conditions as staff stated?
Absolutely.
Okay, the motion is to approve, but with the conditions as staff stated, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that this body recommend, that this body approves um the variance for two zero um two one via invictor dash zero zero four dash one zero. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it. This body approves the variance.
Amen, amen. Thank you, Jesus.
Okay. Let's please mute all of our guests. Our next case is two zero two one via invictor dash zero zero three dash one zero. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Case number twenty twenty one V dash zero zero three dash one zero located at twenty four thirty five Ben Hill. The applicant is Word of Faith Love Center Pastor R Garmin. The zoning is R dash one, single family. Applicant seeks variance to install LED light at Word of Faith Love Center Church. Case type variance.
Thank you, Ms. Solomon. Commissioners, at this time I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Close your full approval, Mr. Chair. Second.
Okay, uh, is, was that Fields or Bryant?
Bryant.
Okay, there's been a motion to open the public here by Commissioner Bryant. It's been seconded by Commissioner Fan. All in favor, sound aye.
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 All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the eyes have it. The public hearing is now open. Is there an authorized representative from Word of Faith Love Center?
Uh, yes, hi, this is Pastor Garmin.
Okay, Pastor Garmin, would you just state your first and last name and your current address?
Reginald Garmin, thirty two nineteen and Coke Street, Douglasville, Georgia, three oh one three five.
Okay, Pastor Garmin, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, we are applying for this variance so that we can add um to our a new monument sign that includes an LED screen that will allow us to communicate to our congregants as well as the community about the various events that are going on in our wonderful city of East Point. Uh, we were made aware of this need um being very fluid in this season because a lot of things are changing. Um, and we want to have the ability to digitally um change and communicate with the community and the congregation. Um, of course, the current ordinances of East Point does not allow that allow that to happen unless we get this variance approved. So we um very much appreciate this um um this body to review and approve the um variance.
Thank you, Pastor Garmin. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter?
Mr. Chair, would you say, Pastor Barry, that I believe is here to speak in favor of this application? And I can ask Mr. Barry to unmute if you would like.
Yes, I'm I'm here. Yeah, I'm in um, I'm the assistant pastor at Word of Faith Love Center and I am in
Okay. Yeah.
In agreement with Pastor.
Pastor Barry, can you please mute the guest?
Yes, sir, please mute it.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Austin, before we get to Pastor Barry, I am getting some broken audio from you. I'm not sure if Ms. Alexander is getting everything that you're saying. So I'm not yet ready to move to the speaker. Ms. Alexander, can you give me a sign that, okay, thank you. Um, so, Mr. Austin, you're just saying that we have another proponent, um, or we have, this is the um authorized representative, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Now, Pastor Barry can be unmuted. Pastor Barry, now would you state your first and last name and your current address, sir?
Yes, Randy Barry, and that is thirty seven forty five Crown Eagle, Douglasville, Georgia. I'm the assistant pastor at Word of Faith Love Center.
Thank you so very much. Pastor Barry, you now have the floor.
It's just in agreement with um Pastor Garmin with the variance of getting this sign erected at twenty four thirty five Word of Faith Love Center.
Okay. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor?
No, sir, I look like that may be the last one.
Okay, thank you. Are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Are there any opponents here to speak against? Okay. Hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fields, seconded by Commissioner Fan, that this body closes the public hearing for this case. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Yes, sir. Case number twenty twenty-one V dash zero zero three dash one zero, located at two four three five Ben Hill Road. The applicant is Word of Faith Love Center Church. The current zoning again is R1, single-family residential, and the applicant seeks a variance to install LED sign at Word of Faith Love Center Church. As stated, this is another church that is zoned residential, and therefore the hardship due to the sign ordinance speaking to residential property. But again, this is not a residence, it is a church which should be, or seen rather, as institutional, and the future land use designation is suburban residential. And the applicant has provided a site plan of the property and a sketch of the sign, the digital sign that they are seeking to, or seeking to get a variance for it to install at the property. And because the sign ordinance does not speak to LED signs on residential properties, again, these churches are zoned unfortunately residential, so we are recommending denial due to that, due to that, that section of the ordinance. However, if the planning commission decides approval, staff recommends the following conditions, which are a host of conditions, and these are actually taken out of the sign ordinance for the institutional zoning district for the city regarding LED signs. There are a lot of them, Mr. Chair, but if you'd like, I can read them. You can let me know what, which one to do.
Okay, well, you could summarize them by citing, referencing where they've come and say A through whatever, and make that a part of the record, and if there's a motion to include those, that motion can include the very same language.
Absolutely. So the first condition, A, is saying that the LED changing sign can only be twenty percent or less of the total of the sign phase. And each message displays shall remain static for at least ten seconds following completion before the next message comes up. So each message will be there for at least ten seconds. If a message is changed electronically, the transition shall be accomplished in two seconds. So it wouldn't be, you know, like PowerPoint where it fades for a while before it gets to the next slide. This should be a two-second transition between messages. No changing sign may include any flashing, full-motion video, or other intermittent elements. No changes sign may have any type of changing effect on the border of the sign. No display or other effect from any electronic change signs are called a glare or other condition that would impair drivers coming down any road. An electronic change sign which uses the scrolling of letters, numbers, or symbols shall be allowed to appear on the sign phase from only one direction for each display. All signs shall appropriately adjust, display the brightness as ambient level so that the brightness of the display does not cause a glare or impair the vision of the driver. No malfunction of a changing sign shall cause a glare or other condition that impairs the vision of a driver of any motor vehicle. And actually, that was it. That was the last condition.
Okay, thank you.
And staff does recommend, as I said, denial because of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, and we've heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fan.
I'm raising, I'm raising motion that we approve with the following condition from A to I as stated by staff.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that this body approves the zoning application two zero two one via Zin Victor dash zero zero three dash one zero with the conditions as stated by staff, A through I. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, I'd like to, I'm asked Pastor Reginald Garmin, Garmin, whether or not you can comply with these conditions.
Pastor Garmin, you have the floor. You may respond to the question of Commissioner Fields.
Yes, hi, Commissioner Fields. We were aware of some of these conditions that Mr. Austin has stated. So we did go with a more expensive option, even though it's going to cost the ministry more money to control the brightness of the sign for any reasons of glare. The sign is able to be controlled electronically by our computers or laptops, so we can designate the transition of one message to another message. So I do not see and anything that will hinder us from following those conditions. We just have to be diligent and intentional in making sure it happens.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do see a hand. Commissioner Lovett, you are now recognized.
Mr. Chair, Pastor Garmin is my pastor, and Word of Faith Love Center is my church, and for those reasons, I will not vote on this motion. I will abstain.
Okay, your abstention is granted. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns? I have a question of Pastor Garmin, myself. Pastor Garmin, you said that the, the church had to or will be purchasing a, a model that would allow the church to comply with the conditions. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman. We, we wanted, we personally wanted a sign that gave us that flexibility, so that's why we went that route in addition to the conditions and being considerate of our neighbors in the neighborhood. We didn't want anything that could cause an accident of cars coming down Ben Hill Road. So we wanted that flexibility.
Okay, thank you. Those were the points that I was going to make in this. We, of course, love to have houses of worship, whatever they may be, within our community. We also must be considerate of safety, and we also must keep in mind that there are residences around those, many of those houses of worship. And there is a reason why we do not allow LED signs within residential communities and along some roads that are heavily traveled as such as Ben Hill Road. And so we would like to maintain the safety of the residents as they traverse Ben Hill Road, and we also would not like to have a negative quality of life impact due to an LED sign. So it is a matter of a balance and making sure that there is a compromise. So I fully hope that the church will absolutely purchase the model that would allow you the flexibility to conform to the conditions as been stated by staff, which is a part of the motion and the second that is currently on the floor. So we greatly appreciate that. Any other comments, questions, or concerns from the commission? Commissioners, currently, there's a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that this body approves the variance for two zero two one via Zin Victor dash zero zero three dash one zero with the conditions as stated by staff. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the variance is approved. Our next case is two zero two one via Zin Victor dash zero zero one dash one zero. Staff, would you please sound the caption for this agenda item?
Case number twenty twenty-one V dash zero zero one dash one zero, located at twenty-seven thirty-six Dawson Drive. Applicant Victory Baptist Church, the current sign is RL Residential Limited. The applicant seeks variance to install thirty-two square foot signs for twenty-seven thirty-six Dawson Drive. The case type is variance.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Solomon. Commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for two zero two one via Zin Victor dash zero zero one dash one zero. Okay, Dr. Bryant made a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bryant to open the public hearing. It's been seconded by Commissioner Fields. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is there an authorized representative from Victory Baptist Church present this evening?
Yes.
Would you please state your first and last name and your current address?
Audrey Wilborn, fifty seventy-five Dublin Drive, Southwest, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three one.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wilborn. You have the floor. You may present your case.
Yes, we're at Victory Baptist Church. We're applying for a variance for this new sign because the sign, first of all, is old. You can't hollace it. It's an eyesore, not only to the church, but to our community. And we are just hoping and that you will approve us receiving a new sign for our church and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilborn. Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of the case? Any other proponents here to speak in favor of the case? Hearing none and seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against the case? Are there any opponents here to speak against the case? Hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing for two zero two one via Zin Victor dash zero zero one dash one zero.
Motion to close the public.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fields, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we close the public hearing. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Case number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one dash one zero, located at two seven three six Dawson Drive. The applicant is Victory Baptist Church, and the property, again, the church is also located within residential limited zoning, and the applicant seeks to install a thirty-two square foot sign at the subject site. The property is zone RL Residential Limited, and is within the future land use designation of suburban residential. The applicant has, has provided a sign location map showing where they are intending to place the sign, as well as a picture of what the front of the property looks like at this moment. And this is the sign, if you can see the bottom picture, coming up into the walkway. They are seeking to install a larger sign, a thirty-two square foot sign, as seen on the slide. For those who are looking can see what they're proposing to install. And staff has provided photos of the site, as it says right now. And staff does have approval with condition that the recommendation should include landscape plan to show enhanced landscaping and lighting around the sign. The base should be composed of masonry brick and natural stone, and sign, it must be a monument sign. It cannot include pole as shown in rendering.
Okay, commissioners, we've heard from the applicant. We've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for approval, Mr. Chair.
Is that what staffs recommend?
They have recommendations.
With conditions?
Three, conditions, one through three, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that this body approves variance two zero two one via Zin Victor dash zero zero one dash one zero with the conditions, one, two, three, one through three, as stated by staff. The motion is made by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none and seeing none, all in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body approves the variance for case number two zero two one via Zin Victor dash zero zero one dash one zero. Our next agenda item is two zero two one, ours and Robert's, Z as in zero, dash zero zero one dash one zero. Staff, would you please sound this agenda item?
Case number twenty twenty-one RC dash zero zero one dash one zero, located at fourteen forty-one Washington Road. The applicant, the Kindred, the Kindred Firm, zoning R1A Urban Residential. The applicant seeks to rezonate subject property from R1A Urban Residential to R3 Multi-Family with concurrent rear setback from six to four point five and concurrent variance for relief from front setback to thirty-five to thirty-two point four. The case type is rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, at this time, I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion over here, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Knight, that this body opens public hearing for two zero two one ours and Robert's, Z as in zero, dash zero zero one dash one zero. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now open. Is there a authorized representative from the Kindred Firm present?
President Asia Kirkendall.
Okay, would you please state your first and last name and your current address, Ms. Kirkendall?
Asia Kirkendall, current address is three zero one five RN Martin Street in East Point, Georgia, three zero three four four.
Okay, you have the floor. You may present your case.
Yes, thank you for having me. We are here today talking about one four four one East Washington Avenue. It is a single lot that has two duplexes on it, and it's currently zoned R1, single-family, which has given us some pushback with our lenders. They want to see a conforming zoning, and due to the R1 zoning and the two duplexes, we would like to have concurrent zoning.
Are there any other proponents here to speak in favor of this zoning matter? Any other proponents here to speak in favor? Hearing none and seeing none, are there any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Any opponents here to speak against the zoning matter? Hearing none and seeing none, commissioners, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close over here, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Fields, that this body closes the public hearing for two zero two one ours and Robert's, Z as in zebra, dash zero zero one dash one zero. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, the public hearing is now closed. Staff, would you please sound your recommendation?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. Case number twenty twenty-one RC dash zero zero one dash one zero, located at one four four one Washington Road. The applicant is the Kindred Firm. The zoning is actually R1A Urban Residential, and the applicant seeks to rezonate from R1A to R3 Multi-Family with concurrent rear setback request from six feet to four point five and concurrent variance for relief from front setback from thirty-five feet to thirty-two point four feet. This prop, this will help them be in compliance with what the zoning will require. And again, the property is currently zoned R1A Urban Residential and has two duplexes on the site. The property is currently legal, non-conforming, and is within the redevelopment neighborhood future land use designation. The applicant has provided the site plan that shows setback from the property and as well showing that the setback that they would not be able to meet, that's their request for the variance. And these are pictures of the site showing the front facade of the two duplexes. This is simply another picture showing the same thing. So there's two duplexes on there, ultimately four dwelling units on one parcel of land. And the recommendation from staff is to, for approval for the rezoning request and for the variance request.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, we've heard from the applicant, and we've also heard staff's recommendation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Because this is a rezoning with a concurrent variance, the motion should be made in the form of a recommendation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Fan.
I make a motion that we recommend to the council the approval of the rezoning of the property and the variance.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that this body recommends approval of case number two zero two one ours and Robert Z as in zebra dash zero zero one dash one zero. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, sound aye.
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 Right.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, the ayes have it, this body will recommend approval of case number two zero two one ours and Robert Z as in zebra dash zero zero one dash one zero. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so very much for bearing with us and for your patience as we got through these six cases this evening. We've now come to the place on our agenda for announcements. Staff, do you have any announcements? It's good for the body.
Uh, yes, sir. We just wanted to let you all know that no applications were turned in for the December cycle. So we will not see you all next month. Um, and you know, if that continues, um, you know, if it changes, whatever cases, staff will update you all. So as of right now, I'm just gonna promptly say, enjoy your Thursday.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, because this is our last meeting for the year, I would like to wish everyone um, all of our guests here, um, a wonderful holiday season, a very Merry Christmas, a very Happy Hanukkah, a very Happy Kwanzaa. Um, or if you are of no faith, um, just a beautiful season with loved ones. May peace, love, and joy abound during this season and the months to come, the year ahead. Um, commissioners, anything else you have to add?
I think you done said it all. A motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
And the motion, a second.
Okay, there's been a motion by Commissioner Fan, seconded by Commissioner Lovett, that we adjourn this meeting. All in favor, sound aye.
Aye.
All opposed, sound nay. Hearing none, this meeting is now adjourned. Everyone, please have a wonderful evening and a beautiful holiday season. Good night.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays. Good night.
Good night.
Night.